I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order because in 20 seconds it will be five o'clock. Dan has a school event to go to, so he won't be here tonight, and then that leaves just seven of us. First of all, is the approval of the meeting agenda for tonight? Did anyone have objections, changes to suggest? No? Therefore, I need a motion to approve the agenda as published. Packet. Second. Okay. All in favors? Okay. I don't see anybody from the public here. Items to be discussed. I guess, do we really have nothing to discuss? I guess not. Okay, staff. No way.
I'm happy to answer any questions about the report that I submitted. Just a note, thanks to Robin and John who submitted in parts of Public Service Day. This was written before that day happened, but I think overall it was a successful experience for staff and I appreciate the very hard work of the committee that put together.
We, I was gone, out of town, but so at some point, maybe here, some highlights of the day.
Yeah, we could do that next month. We just had this trend in before though.
No, yeah, I understand, but.
Yeah, we'd love to share that. We've got good slides you can show you. The only other update is we'll be the council meetings in January where department have kind of go over their budget. Budget and stuff where we sort of again to share our organizational structure, staffing, any big changes coming up. This happens every year as part of the process. This year, as always, I, my approach will be to, to be very positive, to thank council for your support, but also to outline potential service impacts of the flat budget. What that, what that might look like from the public side in as much of a positive framework as we can do, but I think it's important that they know what those, what any reductions or staying flat within flight might, might really become.
And when is that meeting?
The sixth, yeah. And proceeds are more than welcome to come along to that. I can send the information once we get the official good email. It's an all-day meeting, so the, the city does a great job trying to break down approximately when your department will be so that folks can come and go.
We talked about with the financial committee, the little committee that we are meeting before the next board meeting. So will that? Will we go over the? There was some reason why we were going to do that.
I thought it was quarterly.
The quarterly findings was okay.
We could aim to have that meeting before the council meeting if you'd like. That would be in the papers. It doesn't matter a lot to me, but.
No, it's, it's okay. I just trying to put things together.
I don't know that us meeting before that would have any impact on the council meeting in any way at all. Because it seems like they have their own plans for that. In your notes, another disruption at another program. Is there anything that we can do as a board to better support? I mean, it sounds like you guys are handling them beautifully and because we had hoped that that last one was isolated and it doesn't seem to be. Is there anything like that we need to do more expediently, like looking at policies or is there anything that we can do? Or anything that we can do to better support you as a library?
We've, we've been talking about creating some guidance documents for staff to sort of as a reminder of what steps we take. So far, there's been pretty easy access to the leadership team. That's sort of smoothed things very quickly. I think that one of my concerns is if something were to come up and there wasn't a coordinator readily available. All of our staff, of course, are empowered to make these decisions. We trust their judgment. But we, we don't want somebody to feel overwhelmed in making a decision. And when your adrenaline can get going, it can be a little harder to, to make a, a good choice, but this particular, this one at the refugee program. I think it was less linked to the topic than it might seem at first glance. And, and it may have been folks sort of seeking an opportunity to disrupt less than a, a very targeted activity. Without disclosing too much about the people involved.
Well, you sent an email to the board, so I think, I mean, I I found the, 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 the press report about the event totally different than what I mean, they made it sound like the presenters handled it well and they did make it sound like it was targeted a bit. I, I just got because you had sent that email to all of us and I got a totally different story from that press release or whatever.
I feel like the, the disruption was, was barely encapsulated. I mean, you were, you were watching, so I think it feels much longer when you read the article, like it was a a bigger length of time. I'm not saying it wasn't disruptive, it absolutely was, and the behavior was inappropriate and unwelcome. But it wasn't, um, once it was handled and they were out of the room, you know, there was no further incident inside the, the meeting.
I think the issue is what's seen, what's being streamed versus what's in the room. And if the press after the streaming, it looked like facilitators were managing it. If you're in the room, it looks like the staff is managing it. But because of the placement of the cameras, it appears different. And when they had to pause it, the voice saying to the people in DC that were speaking that we need to stop for a moment, we have a disruption, looks like the facilitator managing. It's just how the cameras are positioned and the microphones are, so it's almost as if there's two viewpoints going on in a room, those who are in the room and those who are watching it on a screen.
They may not have known who was staff and who was.
They just heard a voice, right?
So.
They just heard a voice saying stop, right?
How up should our hackles be about potentially any, any activity we, we host and it being disruptive if, if the theme of the activity was not the reason for the disruption? I know it's a really open-ended question.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's so situational, it's hard to say. And I'm, I'm probably poorly framing this one. I I forgot that I had sent as much information in the email as I had. So you, you do know sort of the players involved and these are, are folks that, that have done this before. So I, again, I don't know that it was, that the impetus was the content of the program. But that doesn't remove the fact that it happened here and it was disruptive. I think one concern with all of this is that it does model, you know, the, the Iowa City is not a bubble, that things can happen here. I've been really proud of the way staff have been able to maintain focus on the behavior very explicitly and make it clear that this is not about what, what you're saying, it's the fact that you're not abiding by our rules in a different way. And I'm, despite these two happening fairly close together, I'm optimistic that this is not going to be a new trend. I've spoken to a couple people on the leadership team about doing some additional training at an all-staff meeting right before the next drag queen story time will happen, just about. Again, how do you approach this on a very behavior basis? And of course, we'll, we'll try to monitor social media and things like that ahead of time to see if we see any hints. Calling the police is not our, our first reaction to behaviors at the library. I will say that in this situation, they were just exceptional partner. I thought that they, they really listened to the situation. They, I was impressed by the way that they sort of strategized about how are we going to minimize the disturbance? How are we going to get folks out of the room as quickly as possible and deal with the rest in a different space? And, and I did communicate to the chief afterwards that they, they just really did a nice job.
This is sort of an aside, but because of my experiences with the free lunch program, the police don't get called often, but every once in a while they do, and it's always exactly like that. They, they're so, so good and even-handed.
Sir, I appreciated the email and the detail. You just never know when someone in the community is going to ask about what happens. It was very useful, you know? And I'll also say, I mean, I hope it's not a trend. Given how well you and the staff and the police can handle these things, it's really not a terrible thing. It's, you know, we're, we're, we're offering a forum. People are participating and then sometimes it gets to the edge and, you know, that's, that's really not a terrible thing in my mind.
I think the next time you do the drag queen story hour, it'll be interesting to see if it in any way affects attendance.
Right.
And I mean, I kind of got the impression, again, it was from the coverage, but that it was sort of tied to the election cycle. So, you know, it may be that it just isn't going to happen next time because.
They, they had to handcuff one of these guys. Is that right? Did they give him a summons of some kind?
The, the interesting thing was, I called the police specifically for one of the two gentlemen who was, was not complying with our request to, to stop disrupting.
As soon as you requested, he didn't comply.
So I called, I said, this is who I called out. This is who I'm asking you to, to remove because he won't listen to me. The other gentleman was handcuffed and removed for a different reason. That was existing, was existing before the program. And the police, that's where they intercepted him. And just because I had not asked for him to be removed at all. It just was, that's where they came together and they, they removed him. It was, that was not a particularly graceful process. There was a lot of shouting, swearing, aggression from him as he was handcuffed to the lobby. But again, the police did a, a good job trying to expedite it, minimize it. And I will give our patrons credit for, you know, they walk in the lobby doors, they sort of walk around. I feel like there was a lot of standing to, to gawk or, or make it into a bigger issue. But I think that that was a confusing part for a lot of people who sort of saw a part where all of it was, wait, do you get arrested for, for yelling back at a library program? And no, the person who I called the police for was just asked to leave for the day. And he did, he didn't comply after some some back and forth with the staff.
My only other question is, is there something that prompted this EPA thing, or is it just EPA needs something to do?
Yeah, he did submit into the admin office one day and said. He said, sometime in the past, there had been a dry cleaning facility in the vicinity. I don't know how close. And that they wanted to do this testing. The EPA has done testing here before, but nothing as invasive of sub-slab or anything like that. They've done some air quality testing. I did, like I said, rather by legal, I talked to Brad at length about it. And both, both people sort of said it would seem like it'd be good to have the information. If it comes back with something we need to do, we would of course want to remedy any, any issues that might be there. Obviously, our hope was that if we do it, it comes back with a, a nice clean report. And because we have a more modern I believe that testing would have been done before construction. I would be more nervous if we had a you know, right, a building that was hundreds of years old. But I, I did bring it to this table in case somebody here had, wanted to talk about it or thought that it was something that we wouldn't want to do for any reason.
So possibly we can't read them. It's all the destruction right now.
I don't know. He didn't, she didn't specify read on or not.
Didn't build the different construction going on. If someone could have had a positive.
Read on wouldn't be tied to the historical use of the site. That's, that's what he mentioned.
As far as I know. As far as I know, you don't, you just.
Speculation, so it doesn't matter. I used to remember direct cleaning out.
I don't know how far away it was. I mean, I don't know if we're talking about it was blocks away or if it was, because no one seems to remember the dry cleaning.
Is there a cost associated with this? Are they charging us anything for this?
No, they are not.
If they find something.
It would, that would shoot the budget challenge. Obviously, staff and patron will be in a way.
Right.
A budget hardship, but I, I did ask the city sort of what would happen if something came back and was a, a high expense to remedy? And it sounds like it would be the same process as any unexpected cost that we would, you know, probably do a budget amendment to go from there. And that was one of the reasons I wanted to make sure we go and approve. I'd look at it as well, make sure that we weren't walking into a situation that, that would be criticized. And that had that hurdle to it.
Other questions or comments about elsewhere report? Okay, then we will move on to children's. It's like you've been busy for sure with.
I really diversify, diversifying story time too, so.
I'm telling Jason that I, for I really brought to Adam that I wanted to, so but we also, it was a collaboration with Victoria, the teen librarian. She does outreach out southeast junior high. And some of the students wrote their own story and they came and did a Saturday story time and it was probably like one of the best story times we had and it was absolutely fabulous. The kids were all engaged. They sang songs with the kids. They did shakers and they danced and they read their own story and it was absolutely so.
How many kids?
What was?
How many junior high?
There was like six or seven of them that ended up coming that morning and they want to do it again, so. They're all still working on, so one kid had their story ready and that was the one that they did. So hopefully the rest will get their stories and it's done and we'll continue it. So yes, lots of different programs that we.
The choir was well received.
Oh my gosh, they said, again, one of like the happiest, happiest story times. I was talking with Tom and his wife last night about the Stanley program. I didn't put how many kids were there, but they said about 175. They only prepared for like 50. That will be happening again because it's like a pure joy that Stanley's during. So that was a great question.
Barb said the scavenger hunt was a complete, the kids are just running around and you know, the artwork is not particularly well protected. But nothing was damaged.
Savannah has go here. Actually, talking with Doug had to start for the turn-in location for the elk hunt. One of the places turned in. And we probably have collected about 700 already. The, the stack was like, and I said, you have to come and get this. It doesn't, they go on until January 1st. But yeah, so they were impressed with.
Anything about the grants land lately?
I mean, I worked a couple Saturdays ago and that was all I did was stamp the elk hunt cards. Like so glad there was another person there. Kudos to the downtown district, so.
Well, next year you can plan for a volunteer. That sounds like a really good use of. Okay, so Anne, your report, as usual, it's, it's very enlightening.
Explanation of the problem, which I never understood until I read your report. It really well though.
Next week, ALA Core is having a forum on best practices of ebooks and audiobooks. I'm hoping some other library has some sort of magic solution that could, but from what our practical student has found that everybody just says, yes, problem, what are you going to do? And so things really change. I think on the publisher's side, we're, we're just going to have to make do as we can.
Aren't there some antitrust issues here? I mean, I don't know. Yes, this is a oligopoly now. The public is really a oligopoly. We call them the big five. And they seem to set a crisis in concert with it. That is in violation of antitrust law.
Yeah, and the other player that's put in here is Amazon. Amazon. They, they're pressured to change pricing.
Is, I mean, is the ALA doing anything about?
They're lobbying Congress, but until, I mean, Congress, Congress, so until they, I mean, there's been hearings about it. But that's as far as it's, Latin states have tried to do things, but those have been shut down in federal courts because the federal government is in charge of copyright.
It just seems so like the publishers would make more money if they had a more reasonable pricing structure. Like it just seems that this is prohibitive to like libraries are the major buyers of books in print. Yeah, so it just seems, I mean, my husband and I were crunching some numbers just quickly before this. And he guess he had no concept of this. He's just always like, they don't have the number 23 in the series that I like. This is a big picture. And so we started crunching the numbers and it just, it seems like, you know, because it cuts small libraries out of the picture entirely. I mean, you obviously would have bought a lot more than eight copies of some of these books, which is far more. And it's just like ridiculous that they don't understand that if you can't get it, the people who can't get it from the library are not then buying personal copies. Like it's not an overlapping market. And I think as the misconception from there and it seems like that's a foundational misconception. So it's been frustrating from the get-go.
Those big blockbuster hits that we get 80, 120 and 200 holds on. People are waiting six to eight months for where you start grappling with how many thousands of dollars do we spend on a title?
So you say about half of the budget is going to digital content. What percentage, I mean, especially if you take out children's, what percentage of circulation goes to digital content?
Or not.
Yeah.
I think the last I want to say it's between 10 and 20. So then you get in, what do you do?
Right, right. You buy six more copies of the hardcover and just tell people you really want to read it.
I mean, that's where we are in some cases, especially nonfiction and like forget the digital copy. We'll just put the hardcover on the shelf. Because I'm not paying $65 for a book that might come out five times. So that really makes the digital collection suffer because it does cut out that list. It doesn't have that depth. And it doesn't meet the standards, which is what we really want to provide to the Iowa City community.
I still don't think the public understands this pricing model. And I, I disagree with your saying that selling more copies would be in their interest. It's really not. Their interest is to make this high demand and to put multiples of profit rather than bring it down. It's much more economical, but for them, it's a better model. But I don't think the community understands that they check out a book and never open it, an audio book and return it. We've just paid, you know, and that their, their usage patterns affect this, but then our purchasing patterns, and I don't, I'm not sure we have communicated well enough. Not just as our library, but as the entire industry, how this is working. And I don't know if there's something we can do because it ends up affecting the public's perception of the library. When they say there is a waiting list of 60 people ahead of me, they assume we're ineffective. But we haven't found a way to communicate this well.
I think that's a really good.
And I don't know if you have ideas on that. I mean, locally or, you know, on a national level, but the pressure would then come from the system. I think the other point that you made that was really interesting is the video access that belongs to certain makers like Netflix will now mean there's parts of society that will never have access to those materials. And that was the first time I had read that despite following this topic for a while. And again, how do we communicate the democracy aspect of the libraries? And I, I just don't know where we, where we meet the public.
Well, I think some of the feedback from the brainstorming, burning strategic planning process, I mean, in service day brought that up a lot, that we have to find a way to better communicate that. So I've been thinking about that and now to your point of is there, working with Manny on creating a package that, whether that be videos or be blog posts or trying to get articles and.
By editorials, is there a role for the board in this also?
Yeah, to just start explaining this issue because, yeah, it does make us, it looks like we can't.
We don't manage resources well.
We don't have the resources well. We can't meet your needs. When it's really that we're being hampered from an issue that nobody understands or knows. I mean, digital management, we try to talk to people on the desk at point of need because we did that. Why am I waiting so long? Why, I mean, it's not, it's not a physical book. Why do I have to wait at all? Why can't I just get it? Why do I only get items and can of either, like tomorrow, and just explaining, there's money involved and it's a lot of money.
The other thing I wonder about is the consortium building that universities have done to respond to this. Is there any chance of building those consortiums on a public level at a size that would be large enough to influence this? Because the, the academic libraries changed their model of service because of this.
It would like, I mean, if all public libraries decided not to buy any.
You'd be holding the market.
Yeah, it would be done. Really would.
Or at least for a limited period, just to say the purchasing, but I, I don't know if ALA can build this sort of consumer power.
And that hurts that, you know, your core values as a librarian, like I'm not going to provide.
But it's long-term versus short-term.
Exactly.
I, I just think this is going to be a, a bigger and bigger issue. And I don't know how we, I don't think we, we've effectively communicated it at a local level or on a national level. What's really happening here? And if we want political reaction, we need to have the voter respond. And not just wait for Congress to have a conscience.
Sometimes London, if there's a role of foundation can play in issues like this, you know, I sit down in conversation with you on camera. We talk about this. We help the public understand and the foundation write an op-ed. You know, can, can the other library foundations in the state work together to get something published to be deployed register? I mean, it just seems like this is an advocacy issue that we.
Yeah, because at the end of the day, this is a, this is a money pinching issue that's affecting us. And it's a money pinching issue that's affecting our, our patrons. So we take it through that lens and bring it to the foundation. Perfect marriage.
I don't think it's only money though. It's a bigger issue and, and access across economic classes.
That's fair.
And we need to look at this in a different way.
Well, this is the first time too, when publishers talk, when. Well, this is the first time too, when publishers talk, when, when they're asked by the press or they ask by ALA, why they do that, they. They are almost talking about libraries shouldn't really ever.
Right, that's what they're. Right, right.
And this is like another first time where we're hearing. Well, the libraries are the biggest of the cake, I think, so American options, the first time here.
Right, they're being open about it now, where before we knew it was there, but it wasn't explicit, now they have the permission to be explicit.
Exactly.
Where I think it shifts our responsibility for response.
Yeah, and maybe they can't control hardcover, but it's certainly.
So, I mean, in terms of, I mean, we can just talk about it here, but like in terms of something that. We can help be involved with. Do you want to come back to what I said to you more over, I just, I don't think it's a matter of dumping it back on. On audiobook, there's something the board can do. On a different level, I think we should partner with you. But I do think that the key ultimately is, is. Library, that all libraries, I mean, one Iowa City library is going to. Change in here over in spite of publishers. You could just say, well, we're not buying. It saves you a little money, but it hurts the patrons and it's not gonna, they're not gonna care. Okay, anyway, thank you very much for the report, is it? He's not here, is he? Brent's not here, this was also quite. Educational for me, I never really thought about all the technology that needs to travel around in the bookmobile. And then the next one, Katie's development report. Other questions? Did everybody hear the discussion about the window? Or did that happen before the meeting?
It could happen before the meeting, the, the window is uh set to be sent out tomorrow. So, um, um. I, I think I was under the impression it was coming out a little bit earlier than that, so if this caused any, I have it back in my window. Questions in your household, um, you should be seeing it soon. Now, this really just addresses that we made some, some slight adjustments to the donation form um that we're hoping will. Increase um donations, so of course, you know, the QR code. Younger donors are, are rapidly adopting and have adopted QR codes as a donation source. Um, we decided to um, instead of highlighting this of programming. Uh, in that inbox, um, really create a call for action and help people understand. Um, how to engage and, and really encourage that monthly donating and um. You know, we would prefer people to donate directly to us than not through Iowa shares, but. Um, Iowa shares is an opportunity for payroll deduction for city employees and county employees, government employees, so. Uh, just wanted to make sure that we kind of top lined that and. Uh, they also have a ridiculously long donation address, so just. Create a bitly for them so that it was much easier for folks to get there, um, sometimes, you know, you have to just take that little extra step. And that's pretty much it for that.
Directly, uh, relevant, but something I've always wondered about. So we have giving levels, what, what do giving levels do? Why do we have giving levels?
Yeah. Giving levels allow people to um. Imagine and aspire to another level of giving, so. We actually in the online donation form just changed the giving levels yesterday. So there had never been a ten dollar giving level. And it always started at fifty, but what ten dollars does is then you see that there's an opportunity to um. Any recurring gift, and then you think to yourself, I could do ten dollars. Or um, I could do a hundred dollars. Um, and so those levels also um. We also increased the highest level on that, on, on the online donation form, it used to be a thousand and then increased it to twenty-five hundred. Um, I have found over the years, whenever I increase the highest donation level, um, a bunch of people just bump up. They go, oh, it's something they didn't know they could give more. Something new, but it's just, it's just like, you know, oh, well, this, this level's available now. Yeah, or, or maybe, you know, maybe we can do that this year, so it's just, um, you know. I always, I always kind of really observed myself watching myself make donations and loved to read about. How, um, how other people interact with it and, um, you know, we, we're only to suggest in that moment when we have that feeling of generosity.
I have. This is literally just a wild hair.
Yeah.
And I wanted to just share it, it has to do with donation matching in people's employers, and I'm wondering if there's anything they can. Encourage that group, especially local employers in particular, it's just something that's.
Did I add a line for the nation form yesterday to share with the employer about whether um they match donations? Um. There's not that I know of right now, uh, a listing of matching um employers, there used to be about ten years ago. Someone maintained it on behalf of the community, it was great, but it does, that does no longer exist, I'm sure that was a lot of work. Um, so hopefully folks will just check with their employers, let me see that, um, and it will stop them. Then hopefully I don't check and stop, that's the danger.
Um, to my knowledge, there's nothing under miscellaneous to go over. Um, also, to my for sure knowledge, the president doesn't really have a report. Announcements from members, what do you got, anything they want to share?
I'll, I'll mention, I don't know if others did, I attended the. City had a training on open records and open meetings available to board and commission members and um. The slides from that are available, it was a good, good refresher, nothing we don't know, I don't think, but. The one thing that did come up was, it's presented by a. Iowa League of Cities staff person and. There's uh, understanding of whether a. Virtual participant counts towards quorum is different from our city attorney's understanding of that, so I think that's going to get rediscovered, so they, they say. If you're zooming in, you count.
Right.
Uh, towards the quorum, so. I think there'll be a little discussion around that.
Well, I, I, I think Robin and I went to the same one years, a number of years ago, and of course. That wasn't even a factor, but is it, is. Is it our city attorney's interpretation of this Iowa law or policy or?
Yeah.
And they were the only city interpreting it that way, I think for an hour.
I'm on a Johnson County council and we count virtual attendees. I haven't gone to a single in person meeting with that.
Yeah. As I said, I think that was Stephanie Bauer organized the event, she was going to take it to the city attorney.
I think there's value in encouraging physical presence, because I do think there's. I mean, we had some of the most deadly boring board meetings during COVID, I mean, you couldn't even get anybody to. Put forward a motion for heaven's sakes, let alone second. You do, I mean, there's, there's pluses and there's minus, but I think that encouraging physical presence is, is worth, is worthwhile. You get more diversity of people who can't manage to get to your meeting because of childcare or economic reasons, like public transportation, so there's. I, I'm strongly in support of people participation, because I think we would change the demographics of our board. It'd be significant. Yes, just. Of course, we don't appoint. Yes, we don't say who applies, and part of it is by, the people apply, they're, they're told, this is when your meetings are. And when your unparticipation expectations are. So may change your application. Good.
So you know, is there any, are we, are we missing, we're waiting for an appointee? And what next month, first that?
That closes January third for the application, so still, if, if you have people to promote. Yeah, you get to um of bringing them over or applying to join um a little bit of time off for that and then. Um, if I remember right, we don't see them until they're in the council packet, um, and then we have, we can look at them through that vehicle.
We, we don't get input at some board, you may as a director, but we don't see it. After the decision is made, we will not.
Gotcha.
The way he stated it sounded like. The council deciding who's the representative.
You have access to the applicant information.
After selection.
Yeah.
Well. Act, we have access to the information. When the, when the packet comes out for that council meeting, so the decision has not been made. Public packet, right, right, in terms of our library packet. We've been getting it after the decision, but in terms of council packet, right, we'd be in the council.
Okay.
Um, committee reports to the foundation. Or I couldn't make it, I was like, we're.
Well, not literally, but on a plane.
On a plane, no. Dan's not here, so. Communications, they, we have the couple articles, I think the comments and cookies are intriguing. Alright, so that brings us to the consent agenda. Um, does anybody have corrections or changes to the four minutes from the last meeting? No? And the dispersments, does anybody have any questions or? Comments about the dispersments?
Let's make you pay closer attention to those overdrive.
The other thing I noticed, and this is just really small, is the, the ground checks. Just, I think I noticed it because it's the top of the report, but, so it's forty dollars per check. And are, those must be mostly volunteers, I assume, that are. We aren't hiring that many people.
And any new volunteers um require a background check, and there's pretty active hiring, um.
Going on.
Uh, pages often were hiring, and we've, we had this, we just did some hiring to. With them substitute librarians who work the, the sub weekend hours. Uh, it just happened that a few of them moved on to different work. And so we were hiring for that, so it does look disproportionate this month, but we'll do, um. They, it is certainly an expensive adds up, and it's just kind of a rolling, that's hard to predict.
So any, no other comments, questions about the dispersments? Okay, then I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. A second from Derek, DJ, I'm sorry, um, okay, all in favor? Posed. Okay, then the last thing is to set the agenda for the next meeting in January. Maybe we'll go a little bit longer next time, it looks like there'll be more to, more to discuss. Anybody have things that they feel need to be added? No? Okay, then, that doesn't have to be voted on, does it? To set the agenda?
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, and the finance committee is going to meet. For the first time before the board meeting next, next month. Was there some topic we rolled over from last month? It was something that we moved to March. Except. Is that the. Cause I don't see anything with you though. It was the policy review. Just seems like there was some loose end. Right, in that case, I think the meeting can adjourn.